This is the July nineteenth, two thousand twelve meeting of the Situate zoning board of appeals. Because of my addled brain, the first item is incorrectly on the agenda. There is no more request for modification of the comprehensive permit of Stockbridge Real to Trust because we already approved it.
Didn't we have to do a decision?
That item is there by null and void. Yeah, but Mr. Galvin was gonna give us what he wanted.
We still have time for that?
So the, so the next, the first item.
The first item is continued from June twenty first, two thousand twelve, John Hodgson's petition, Neil's one sixteen Stockbridge Road. Situate, our current building inspector's denial, their request for enforcement in March of two thousand twelve, Park Millard, one sixty eight Stockbridge Road.
Okay. Well, Ms. Hopkins, I assume Adam's not, Mr. Brodsky is not here tonight, but I assume you've pretty much presented everything that you have to present.
Was Adam's understanding that testimony was closed and this was just a decision, so that is not...
Did we close testimony?
We took a vote.
I don't think we closed testimony, but...
One more question. We just voted on the one question?
Yeah, we voted on half of it and left the other half open, right?
We have, well, we have Neil's letter from...
Well, we have Neil's letter. If you'd like. The seats are more comfortable.
Warren made the motion that the position is appealed to this board, overturning the statement's determination to be granted, as my hale and honour favor. Tree's yes, Allen and Warren nay, the motion did not carry.
All right, well, it is my recollection, what we did was act upon a portion of Neil's decision in which he determined that the statute of limitations on the enforcement of building permit was, would, was time barred, but that we still left open the issue of dealing with whether or not an enforcement action was warranted with respect to whether or not the, the use of the, the outside use of the property for composting was a, a unlawful expansion of an existing non-conforming use. And we have yet to deal with that part of it. And I don't believe that we made any motion to close the testimony. We continued the hearing till tonight. And so I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna discuss here openly, Jeff.
I'm sorry, Peter, I, I just, if I could hear Nicole read, read that vote to me again, I'd appreciate that, but it's, that's not what I heard.
Well, it's not what I, I don't think that's what we voted, but let's go ahead, go ahead and, and read what you've got there, Nicole.
Warren made the motion that the position is appealed to the board to overturn Mr. Duggan's determination to grant it. It was accepted by Tree's eyes, who voted yea, yes, and hail, and then Warren voted nay, and the motion did not carry. And that was the only motion I have documented. I did not have a motion to, to close the, the, close the case.
Okay. So...
And then I have that you, you would draft a decision that would support the motion.
All right. Well, that's only part of what happened.
What else happened?
Well, there were, as, as we...
Oh, I'm sorry, there's another crack in the...
Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, I gotta keep reading down. Warren motion to hear the other portion to be continued until July nineteenth, two thousand twelve, second by Tree's eyes, all continuing. Sorry, I just, that's the bottom.
So, as, as the dispute had unfolded here, there was a, there was a dispute about what it was that Mr. Brodsky had asked Mr. Duggan to do. One school of thought was that he asked for a cease and desist order on the basis that the, that the use was illegal and, and Neil's decision was that he was time barred from doing so because the building permit authorizing the use had been issued more than seven, six years ago. And so he was time barred from enforcing under section seven. He was time barred from enforcing a violation of the building permit. The second portion of Mr...
I'm sorry.
Mr. DeLeese's letter was not so specific as to relate only to the building permit, but also asked, took the position that the use of the property for composting was either a illegal or if it had been a lawful non-conforming use, had been substantially expanded or altered.
Mr. Brodsky.
Yes, right, that was, and, and Mr. Duggan had been unable to conclude his investigation with regard to that aspect of Mr. Brodsky's appeal, and that's what's left on the table. All right?
That's, I guess, my read of Neil's denial of request for enforcement was that, yes, you're correct, it was time barred, is, is what Neil said. But he didn't seem to part, Neil didn't seem to parse out of his decision the difference between what was time barred and what wasn't. There wasn't a, a determination that there was a violation of the building permit that was time barred. So, and I understand that, that the board, that the board is interested in this issue of expansion. I understand that Mr. Duggan has issued some form of letter this afternoon that addresses that. So, I, I, my question is, is are we here on an appeal of that letter? Or, in other words, that's a new determination, is it not?
No, I don't, I don't read his latest letter as a, as a new determination. Only, but, well, actually, I think we're certainly able to deal with his letter tonight insofar as it is, it, it, it is his attempt to respond to the second part of the issue that remains open. We did not fully adjudicate Mr. Brodsky's appeal last week, last month.
Okay, so wouldn't Mr. Brodsky have to, or somebody other interested party have to take an appeal of Mr. Duggan's most recent decision? As it states new, procedurally, this, this seems a bit arbitrary to me.
Well, there's a lot about what's happened in the last three months that is unusual. But, in, for all intents and purposes, my, my point of view tonight is that what, whatever Mr. Duggan's letter says is, does, does not affect the, the position that I intend to advocate tonight. So, I'm, my, my, my desire to finish with the hearing of this appeal is, is to, is to, is to conclude the receipt of evidence or testimony, right? And then to, to determine how the board wants to, to deal with the, the remaining aspect of Mr. Brodsky's appeal. Yeah?
I would just want to address the procedural aspects of this.
Okay.
As you know, I've been building inspector eighteen years.
Yeah.
I'm well versed in zoning law, I'm well versed in case law, particularly well versed in this aspect of case law. A, a reception by complainant that a building inspector isn't enforcing the bylaw in the manner that he wishes it enforced is only appealable if the building inspector writes something. He cannot appeal an inaction by a building inspector, which I would respectfully submit. There has not been any inaction by the building inspector. I've been going ten, twenty hours through this, and very disapproving. But having said that, procedurally, this matter, we had this conversation before. If Mr., the other Brodsky wished to pursue this matter, he would have to seek a mandamus in a court of law. A building inspector's inaction is never before his own court of appeal, I would respectfully submit. What was in front of this board was an appeal of my decision not to extinguish the use at all times. And I didn't divulge this because I, I didn't want to impact, you know, the other returns, the other party. I have felt there was an expansion. I had been working for two months with Mr. Nielsen, as you can see by my letter. He's done tremendous job to reduce area, reduce material, create buffer. And this letter was really, it was, I mean, I, I, really a matter of courtesy to give to the board. The board, at this stage, I would respectfully submit, did not involve my investigation, did not involve my enforcement. The board, I think, acted, you know, upheld my decision, I, I thankfully for that. And now Mr. Brodsky can appeal that to the courts. And I just feel procedurally, this, this letter certainly is indicative that I have been investigating, have been enforcing. And if you look at the zoning bylaw, the building inspector has the discretion to, to do the enforcement in a manner that he deemed appropriate. This isn't the manner I deem appropriate for now, but this, this is final, there's much more to be done. And I thought perhaps that we would have a conversation that, you know, the parties perhaps would say, okay, what do you want? Are you gonna go to court and try to get a judge with senior to use? Are you gonna work with this judge? And I think a lot of progress has been made towards, you know, a resolution like that. But that's not gonna happen, you know, frankly, if it's just gonna go to court, you're not gonna be in the hands of a judge. I don't see, seem to be, you know, spending a lot of energy for that. And that's what I hope would happen tonight. I, I really am a little surprised that, that, you know, the positions that the board is going to make the determination. I would just, now, you know, the board obviously can do anything, but like to see this process, and that's pretty procedure. I, I don't think that's...
Well, is there anything about what I, how I've just described what happened in the past that, that you disagree with? I mean, last month, we said, okay, we'll deal with this piece of it and we'll finish the second piece next month, all right? Did you have a problem with the second part of that?
The only, the, under the statute, the only thing that I'm required to do is provide a determination within fourteen days if I disagree, okay? If I agree, and I do impart, as I've indicated in my letter, no statutory limitation. If, if the complaining party believes that, you know, things aren't going fast enough, they can go to court, get a mandamus. Which in this case, it, it's not gonna happen. You know, I could, I could shoo in the amount of work I put into this, the amount of work I have in how the zoning issues and... The amount of work that's been done to mitigate, you know...
Well, this board, in, in the context of the appeal that's still before us and the, and the hearing is open, right? We have it in our authority to, to decide, to make a decision as to whether the use of that property for composting is a legal use, if it's a lawful non-conforming use, and if it's been expanded such that it requires special permit relief. Do you disagree with that?
Yes, I, I believe they would have to file, somebody would have to file an application to get that coming. I believe the, I think that's the plaintiff, what we call, in the case, would have to file an application for special permit if you wanted to, to go down that road.
Jeff. Section nine fifty of Rev. Bylaw talks about what the powers of an authority of the zoning board appeals is. Section nine fifty says, to hear and decide appeals made pursuant to forty A, section eight, for which Mr. Brodsky's initial appeals was. And then also to hear and decide special permits, applications, and variance applications. So, I, I, you know, I heard a vote at the last hearing that upheld the determination of the building inspector that he did not have the authority to grant the relief that was requested because he was time barred. End of story, right? I mean...
No, I don't think so. I think the case law says end of story when we write a decision.
Sure, a final, final action based on your vote, right? So, in other words, are you, do you have any authority to take an additional vote this evening? Is there a question before you that hasn't already been answered by the building inspector?
To the extent that the building inspector made a decision that, as to his authority to act on the, on the appeal as it, as it related to the building permit that was issued in nineteen ninety-two. Ninety-two?
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, I, I answered the...
As it relates to the...
My letter, Mr. Brodsky, oh, kind, about, he never asked for reinforcement. He asked it, I extinguished the use, cease and desist, that was his direct question. A month later, he sent me another letter clarifying, okay, which, which, which is, was the operative request, February twenty eighth, two thousand twelve. That was the operative request for enforcement, which I began working on. The only statutory requirement to send Mr. Brodsky a letter with respect to my actions that I was taking was if I had decided not to take any action. That wasn't the case. I'm under no statutory requirement to speed things up, go to court, send fines. And this is completely within my discretion. And if, my, my point is if Mr. Brodsky wants to, you know, has an opportunity to go to court and seek a mandamus, at which point I would be quite sure that he would not prevail.
All right, so... Is it, is it your position that his second letter does not come within the purview of the original request?
Absolutely. I think it was his admission that, that perhaps the first request was not clear.
All right, and we are, but we are here to act upon your response to his letter of February twenty-eighth, right?
Which you did, I believe. If I could just say something here.
Well, yes or no? Is it the February twenty...
Yes, I agree, I agree.
Okay, all right, so that's the operative letter that we're dealing with, February twenty...
Right, but let, let, for argument purposes, that first letter asked me two things. The first thing I denied, and I, I, I sent him the load in fourteen days, he appealed it, okay? The, the, the appeal of my not doing anything that was tied to the second part, assuming that the second part was in that letter, what, it's not right. It is not before the court. That's, that's my position. Because I am, in fact, I, I do agree with him entirely, and I, and I am taking action. And I'm, I'm taking the action that I deem appropriate to do the enforcement. If I give a final letter stating, okay, this is it, and this is all we're gonna do, that letter is then subject to appeal. You know what I'm saying?
I agree with you. You haven't denied it, so there's no appeal.
Huh? I haven't denied it.
Right, in fact, it sounds to me like you're enforcing, yeah.
I agree with it. All right, and I, and I've taken action.
So the next step would be you guys to, on that aspect, I agree with Neil.
So do you, do you believe that the letter that you sent to, to Green Connection today is a letter that gives her rights to act?
No, I do not. I think a business that's been in place for eighteen to twenty years without, with, not a complaint until one or two years ago, I, I don't think there's a real right to judgment here, and I, I, you know, I, there are, I wouldn't necessarily want it in my backyard. But I think if you look at the history of this complaint and how long these folks have been there and understood it was there when they moved in, you know, it's just a question of equities here in my mind. But that doesn't mean that we're not going to get him back to where he's supposed to be in perhaps nineteen ninety-five. It, it's a very difficult question, what, where were you in nineteen ninety-five? And that's twenty years ago. I, you know, and, and this is what we're working on. And I kind of hope the board will get involved in that discussion and try to fill out the complaint and, you know, get some sense of where they wanna go with this. Because, you know, my sense is, it's, I have my sense, but...
Well, I think it's not, it may not...
In, in the letter that I sent, frankly, it wasn't meant to be a letter that you could appeal. It was meant to update you, it was a courtesy, and where was that?
More information.
It was informational, yeah, huh?
Well, since you sent it to us, isn't your letter, doesn't your letter imply by its terms that your belief is that the, that the use of the property for compost, for manufacturing compost is lawfully pre-existing? Because if it was illegal, if it was an illegal use, would you have the authority to, 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 to do that?
I, I believe I'm time barred from enforcing the, you know, enforcing the bylaw with respect to compost.
Okay, so you think, your position is...
Compost.
Your position is that the, that the relief available under section seven, the, the, the six-year statute of limitation on the building permit also applies to whatever the use that ancillary use of the property was that wasn't mentioned in the...
Well, that is what I hang my hat on. I'll just add something else to that. Not only was the... Not only was the use listed, uh, on the building permit, uh, along the other uses in the building, um, I also gave them a CO, and under the, if you look at the zoning bylaw, CO is, is a indicator, or, or you shall, CO is given when the structures and uses on the premises are in accordance with the zoning bylaw. And was that inadvertent? Yes, because I inherited this whole business back in nineteen ninety-five. And I, I, you know, I had no reason to think it wasn't grandfathered.
So, you, you think that we can't sit here tonight and decide that it's illegal?
I think it's in your mind. No, I just, I, I, I just, you know, I think procedurally, uh, it's in my hands, this is still, this is, you know, I-
I think the expansion is.
Uh?
Well, unless you, I, I, I think there's case law, and I, I wish I'd brought it, but I remember reading something, that an expansion can be so great as to make the, the use il- illegal.
Well, that's fine, and that, that's, that's also, um, now that I've acknowledged it's an expansion, I suppose Attorney Brodsky could head down that path.
Well, as long as you don't take any action, he doesn't have a remedy.
Yes, he does, go to court again, and, or, uh, he can also appeal your decision. He has plenty of remedies. And I, just to assure you, as I did before, you know, we are working, uh, for instance, the board, I, the Board of Health is looking at the noise issue, and, uh, I have her over there today, and, you know, it's, it's something that, I, you know, I, I think, uh, perhaps the most bothersome aspect of this, um, I've been over there ten times the last couple of months, I, I, there is no dust from that operation, um, and I have not smelled anything, I'm, I'm sure over the years, I think perhaps you brought in that you have another, but in two months, I have not smelled anything for that. That was a problem.
We're gonna do something.
Yeah. Well, I've kinda had a, uh, change of heart about this over the past several days. Uh, which you won't be happy about.
Mm-hmm.
Which you won't be happy about.
Oh, that, I'm, no, I'm, I'm happy to have my experience.
Uh, because, uh, I, I just, I don't see anything, uh, in the, in the record. I see, I see that the appellant has provided, uh, a sufficient amount of evidence to demonstrate, to, to demonstrate that the use of the property for composting may not be legal. And, uh, uh, it's, it's funny that you see what you see in the building permit, and I don't see it. Um, and, and you can't give a special permit to expand a, a, a use for a property that wasn't initiated legally. The question is, when the use is begun in nineteen ninety-two, and nobody does anything about it for twenty years, right? Is there a latches issue that this board can implement? Do we have the power to say, well, we think maybe this is an illegal use, but, um, you've waited twenty years, and this is too long?
There's no question that a use that has been in existence for more than seven years, uh, uh, by virtue of a building permit,
Yeah.
uh, is barred from enforcement.
Yeah.
As is a building, um, with a building permit, uh, with or without a building permit, enforcement barred after ten years. Now, you could build a house on the lot line, if I come along ten years one day, with or without a permit, I cannot make you move that structure. I mean, that's the law, that's, 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 um, my call wasn't that when that was originally terminated, I thought it was illegal. Uh, it was never my call, I, I, my, my call is on time barred, and now I'm dealing with the expansion. And I thought I heard a two-one vote opposing the decision.
Well, you did, but since the vote hasn't been reduced to writing and filed, uh, with the town, with the town clerk, uh, we have the power to reconsider it.
Uh, did you reject that? Oh, okay.
My position, my position hasn't changed, you know? I was the one vote who said it was, I thought it was an illegal use, and did not uphold you.
All right, I, I, I've said my piece, thankfully.
Right, and I think I have too, I think my position was well established at the last hearing, so. I don't know if my brothers here have change of heart and wanna see a different vote.
What does John think?
I think he's still in favor of our original decision, I think the, the use might have been, and I think he's looking at it now, I don't think we, uh, I think he took the right action, he took initiative. And I think the action he's taking now, and looking at it, and trying to get it resolved, is an action I think we should let unfold.
All right, well, under the, with the agreement that we had with the applicant made in May, the agreement was that, uh, that the time for us to, uh, act would be continued until tomorrow, that we would have to take a final vote and file a decision by tomorrow. So, knowing that I'm not gonna be around tomorrow, uh, I drafted two decisions. Uh, uh, one that goes one way and one that goes the other, and, um, so what I wanna do is give each one of you a decision. Wait a minute.
These are two, these are both denials, the appeal, I wanna grant the appeal.
Right now. So, I didn't get, she didn't print, print the both, uh, or I sent them the wrong ones. All right, well, I'll tell you what.
You can just cross some things out.
No, 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 it's just because here's, here's, here's what, here, my, here's my suggestion. Whatever decision we make tonight is gonna be appealed. And, uh, the, the question is, what's the most efficient way of, uh, of, of dealing with, uh, how, how those appeals proceed? I'm really troubled by the, the, by the latches issue.
What, what do, I don't understand what you mean by your, what are your troubles?
Well, but I'm, I'm trou- I'm troubled about the fact that, uh, that, that, uh, that a use that initiated twenty, twenty-
Eighteen, twenty years, huh?
Twenty years ago, um, hasn't been challenged until now.
Except that you go back to right to-
Especially when the, when the, when the applicant, um, you know, has been intimately aware of it. It's not like the applicant just moved into the neighborhood.
Okay, but under Cape Resorts, we talked about this last time, it says, latches or estoppel is not a defense to an action to enforce municipalities' bylaws or zoning ordinances. It just doesn't exist. You don't get to, you don't get to pull that out of your pocket, and say, you sat on your rights. It's an illegal use, it's an illegal use. It can't be, it can't be allowed, no matter what. Unless Jeff's got something different.
Well, I, I frankly didn't come here today prepared to discuss any of this, because it was my understanding that the vote at the last hearing was an affirmation of Neil's denial and request for enforcement in its entirety.
Well, Jeff, in all fairness, there's absolutely no way you could have that understanding, 'cause that is precisely not what happened.
It's apparently Attorney Brodsky's understanding this evening, as per his client this afternoon. This is that, that we're gonna discuss the decision, that the vote had already occurred, and I think I just heard, we don't say the same thing. Peter, this has been a, a complex issue, which we've all agreed over the last many months.
Yes, it has. Yeah.
And it most definitely was exactly what my understanding was when I left the last hearing. And I, I'll even bring it further, just because I had a discussion with my client, is, is, my understanding was, is that this court had a certain period of time to act, and then a certain period of time to take final action. And those two things are mutually exclusive of one another, and they were addressed by Attorney Brodsky in his prior letter, granting the extension because he was the applicant. I, I did not come here this evening expecting to discuss the Kate Patel case. I don't, I, I, for instance, I haven't jeopardized that. I don't know what law has transpired since. I know it was a court of appeals case that came out in the eighties, I believe.
This is a SJC case I'm looking at.
That, so, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, that, obviously. So, I mean, what I'm here, a- a- and, I can just amplify a little, is Neil issued a letter today, and that letter, that letter stated that he believed that there was an expansion of the use. And so, now that's something that we have to deal with. And I think that, to the extent that this board is thinking that he's gonna come in here tonight and vote binding terms or something along those lines, that it felt that there was an expansion, well, that's effectively what's been the position that the building inspector has taken, and now we have to deal with it. Uh, and, and we've been trying to deal with this, this isn't an easy issue, um, we've been trying to deal with this for many months, and Mr. Nielsen has, 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 you know, indicated in his letter, has, has reduced significantly the operation already. He has moved it significantly away from, um, the applicant's dwelling. He's put a buffer in, and he's taken other measures too, that this board's not privy to, um, and it shouldn't be privy to. And so, we're working, we're working that out. I didn't come here tonight expecting to discuss with the testimony on, um, that, you know, as to what use existed in nineteen ninety-two, and how it's changed since, and whether the, you know, whether the building permit and the failure to appeal that permit stops even this conversation. I had thought that this board acted, and I take, I continue to take that position. It's, it's not even a position, it's a genuine-
Well, we didn't close the record.
You voted to uphold the determination of the building inspector. What else is there left? What are the questions?
Well, I mean, I think, I think what Ne- what, uh, what Nicole read was pretty accurate, right?
Thank you.
All right. So, all right, I have a decision here, I have a, I have a motion. And that, the motion is that, uh, last month, um, we, we dealt with that portion of, we, we, we took the vote that we took. And, 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 uh, my understanding, uh, was that tonight we were going to deal with the rest of the requests that Mr. Brodsky had made that didn't, um, pertain specifically to his power with respect to the enforcement of a building permit, or violation of a building permit. And that is what we have left to deal with. So, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, the board find that there was insufficient evidence presented by the appellant's to support their claim that the, the rest of the building inspector's denial of the appellant's request for enforcement was erroneous.
I didn't understand it. Try that again.
By the appellant's to support their claim that the building inspector's denial of the appellant's request for enforcement was erroneous.
But isn't that where we voted last time? What's the difference between, we already voted that last time?
Well, we, we, we voted it with respect to the issue of the statute of limitations. The second part of the vote cleans up what's left of the, that, my understanding is, we did not deal with, which is that whatever the, uh, wha- whatever enforcement authority has beyond the enforcement of a building, of the violation of a building permit.
So, n- so, you, all right, so let me see.
To the extent there is any.
So, you're saying he, there was insufficient evidence that he, that he failed to enforce the expansion?
That his denial, that, that, that his denial of their request was erroneous.
Denial, of request for what? Ex- w- the expan- regarding the expansion?
For, for, in f- Yes, well, whatever, I mean, I-
I mean, he never denied it.
My denial was very, very specific. I denied, I, I refused to extinguish the youth, that was my denial.
That was it. I agree.
And then I, in, in, after Attorney Brodsky sent me the second request for enforcement, uh, which would not contain the first, uh, request for enforcement, although, you know, he certainly, that's a big, uh, depending on his case, um, I disagree, um, I, I've acted on it, favorably. And I'm not, I have not completed my actions.
Well, this is, this is what I'm trying to achieve here, because when we wrap this up, okay? Uh, and, uh, y- y- you've now put into play with your letter, um, the issue of expansion of the use.
Right.
They have a remedy with regard to this request for enforcement, which I wanna give them so that they have it. And they also have another remedy.
Well, I'll, I'll- If, if they have a remedy, this is, they not have a written instrument. If they feel any expansion of that use results in the use being extinguished, uh, you know, they could pursue that through this letter.
I, I agree. I mean, I don't think the second question is before us, because it was never, the, the request for enforcement regarding the expansion was never denied.
Right, I mean, if you think about it, take it extrapolated out, you would have to make a unanimous vote to either uphold or deny the building inspector's determination. He has, or to, I'm sorry, you'd have to make an effort to deny this, his, his determination.
To overturn it.
Right, which, that's been taken care of, so here we are now, you know, the way that you just crafted this proposed motion is, is in the negative, and it deals with an issue that Neil didn't address in his determination at all, and, and you go beyond that again.
Well, I, oh, wait, I, this, I didn't deal with any issue here, it says, this is very generic.
Oh, no, I know. I know, and this is a complex issue.
For a reason, it's a generic.
Yeah, I get it.
There is insufficient evidence presented by the app- appellant's to support their claim that the building inspector's denial of the appellant's request for enforcement was erroneous.
I guess I gotta look at their, I guess I gotta look at their request again, 'cause I just don't read it, or is it?
Well, wouldn't it be- Wouldn't it be best hated, uh, whether the building commissioner ought to be denied with respect to his issue, with respect to his statements concerning expansion, to the extent he wanted?
Well, I see this. Uh, 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 can I, if I can?
Go look at the cases that discuss appealing the denial of a building, it's about this determination, okay?
Yeah, I would-
Like, there's a s- there's a, uh, standard of proof, it's the appellant's burden, and, uh, and, and he has to show that the denial was, of the request for enforcement was erroneous. That's the language. It achieves the, you know, I mean, you're looking a gift horse in the mouth.
I think that it's, I think that it's a second vote on the same issue that you already voted.
No. No, I, and actually, Adam does say it, he says he, m- moreover, Mr. No, I, and actually, Adam does say it. He says he, moreover, Mr. Duggan failed to consider the expansion of the illegal uses, which are not subject to the Se- Section seven limitation period. So, t- to the, to the extent that he does request that.
That's, that's what-
Yeah. But maybe we don't, let's not be so broad. Let's, let's say right there regarding, I mean, add in there regarding the expansion.
What, last question?
Yeah.
What is the statutory timeline on the building inspector responding, uh, favorably to the request for enforcement?
Is this a quiz?
I have the answer.
I don't think there is.
There is, there is not. There is not.
Well, the only one that would, would appeal this at this point, this particular issue, would be Adam and his client. And he's not gonna appeal it because you've agreed with him.
Right. Right. So then we would be the ones who appeal it to the extent that we believe we're adversely affected by the decision of the building inspector listed in his letter today.
Right.
That letter today was written after the application made by Adam on behalf of his clients. By the way, so were all of Adam's subsequent letters, and I understand that they were put forward here as evidence to the ultimate question that was put forward in his application. But his application was an application to appeal the determination of the building inspector to deny his request for enforcement. That's been, that is the issue.
Yeah.
And that's what you guys have the jurisdiction and authority for, so it's your bylaw to determine, which you have. If there's another question that comes before this board, or if there's an application that comes before this board, then jurisdiction is conferred again, and that very well might happen. But I just don't see that it's here now. And that, and that's just a respectful statement on my behalf. Now, I mean, I know, again, that this is a very complex issue that we've all been dealing with procedurally and substantially.
Well, what I don't wanna do is set up a situation where there have to be two lawsuits.
But you are not, but wouldn't make that determination. Adam would be making that determination.
Well, it depends on how we act.
I guess I'm a little confused. Are, uh, are you consider, are you considering the vote that we took the last time regarding the illegal use done? Are you suggesting, okay, you're not suggesting a second vote on that?
Yeah. No.
Okay.
Not right, not now. No.
Okay.
Uh, what I'm, what I'm saying is that, that, um, insofar as his, his response was partial, right?
Right.
Right, that we still have left that portion of his request that, that dealt with the expansion of the use.
Okay. So basically, i- i- what you're saying is, um, assuming that, um, the Nilsons, Ms. Ms. Hopkins and Ken Nielsen, um, have requested, um, enforcement with respect to the expansion, you wanna deny that?
Yes.
Because now there is evidence, I mean-
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I can live with that.
Yeah.
I, I thi- I think that's true. There is nothing to enforce regarding the expansion.
And to the extent that there's an appeal, um, the appeal is, is an appropriate venue in which, um, Ms. Hopkins has the opportunity to ride herd on Mr. Duggan and, and, uh-
Who's gonna ride herd on me?
To ensure that something is done
Yeah.
to, uh, to ameliorate what's going on on the property.
Well, she's getting it now. I mean, you've agreed that there's an expansion.
And I have been all along.
Right.
And, and I'm not gonna sit here and keep to my daily schedule, but I-
Yeah, I don't want it. I've got enough on my own.
I have four request for enforcement sitting on my desk that I put off to take care of this one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Get the letter out tonight, so it's, it's just my reality.
S- so, it, d- let me ask you this.
And, and when, when I complete, and I, if, so I may think Mr. Brodsky has an opportunity to appeal now.
Yeah.
When I complete, he will certainly have an opportunity to appeal. He has an opportunity to appeal the decision, you know, upholding my decision.
Yeah.
Not without, uh, opportunity.
Right. But why would they, I don't know why they would appeal when you are, you are enforcing the, the expansion.
Well, I don't- They might appeal the, uh, the, uh, decision before, the, the, the position that it was by time bar.
The front, the implicit finding that it was a-
Yeah. Well, that I understand, but that's, that's the first question. I think there's two parts to this appeal.
Right.
The illegal use and the expansion.
This one here, I, I think, the question's been raised, if a nonconforming use is, is expanded, uh, and I know Attorney Brodsky raised it.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with that, that, that case law, but he said it's a-
Neither am I.
Huh? Yeah.
I am.
The, the expansion renders the, the use null and void?
No, no, sense is present. Right. With the motion we have. Yeah.
Yes. It's r- it's, it's right here. It's, it's in here.
Do you have a copy?
So that's the motion.
Okay. Did you make it?
I did.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Sign our names, right?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your consideration.
How many do you want, Nicole?
Right.
Like, okay.
How many, how many do you need?
How do I get off the board?
Two. I'll do that copy. Yeah.
Well, when can I get a copy of those, for Adam? When can I get a copy of those?
Right now.
Okay. It's one.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Oh, I thought you already signed it, John. So you're done with me, too?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. We're, we're all signing the same thing, right? It didn't have multiple copies or something? Gonna make sure before you-
Yep.
Reboot more.
Yeah, I mean, he has to make sure he's turning in the right thing. I don't know what differences you make.
John, you need to ha- you need to sign that one.
Yeah.
These two are, yeah, these two are.
Exactly the same.
The only thing that was different was the last paragraph. I, I, I gave this one, I got, there was two copies of this man instead of, uh, uh, copies of the-
Oh, here's the third one.
These are all the same, then.
It's done. We can file it.
Yeah, let's just, let's just make sure. I'll, you know, 'cause I, I drafted them all.
Don't we give it to the board?
I still vote it was at Luccam.
Okay.
I know, it's over. I thought he was gonna change his vote.
Alright.
Let me get that to the board.
Next.
Nobody's, nobody wants to come up?
Larry, how are you? How are you?
That's yours. Is that yours?
This is. I'm sorry, this is which?
Ten Buttonwood.
Okay.
Howdy. Hi.
Proceed.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Larry Mayo. I am an attorney representing Scott Horton, uh, the owner of Ten Buttonwood Lane in Situate, Massachusetts. And, uh, to my left is Jeff, Jeff Hassett, who is the project engineer, uh, representing, uh, Morse Engineering. Again, we're here today, uh, before the board, looking for a finding to reconstruct the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling located at Ten Buttonwood Lane in Situate. We think that the, that the proposed, the newly proposed single-family dwelling, uh, won't increase the nonconforming nature of the structure, but will in fact lessen the nonconforming of the property. Um, specifically, what we're looking to do is take down the existing home and build a no- new home approximately eleven feet further back from the street, so as to allow the septic system presently sitting to the, uh, far-
I'm sorry, wh- wh- hold one second. Could you all close the doors, please? My ADHD, uh, is distracting me. Go ahead.
Great, sure. Again, specifically, um, what we're looking to do is take down the existing home and build a new home, uh, about eleven feet further back from the street, so as to allow the septic system, which is presently located to the far rear of the yard, to be located, uh, to the front yard. Now, yeah, I, I think that, um, these proposed improvements are really encouraged by the Situate zoning bylaws, because number one, again, we're bringing the front yard setback into compliance with the zoning rates. Uh, and secondarily, and perhaps most importantly, we're removing the septic system from what is a, number one, FEMA flood zone. Number two, the Situate Flood Plain and Watershed Protection District, and number three, the, uh, one hundred foot conservation wetlands buffer zone. You know, the only reason the premises is nonconforming is because of the street frontage. Uh, the property sits in the R three district, which of course requires ten thousand square feet. Uh, this particular property contains approximately eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet. Um, again, the problem is that it contains only seventy feet of frontage versus the hundred feet that is required. Uh, nothing else about the existing home or the proposed home, uh, would be out of compliance, or is currently out of compliance, or would be as a result of this project. Um, hence, in my humble opinion, I think the ZBA should find that the proposed dwelling isn't substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is the existing nonconforming dwelling.
Indeed, less so. Uh, is the, is the total gross living area increasing, and by how much?
The total gross living area is increasing, and Jeff, I think you have that, uh-
Yes, the existing, um, structure is nine hundred and twenty-six square feet. The proposed is twenty-five hundred and nine square feet, including the porches.
That's pretty substantial. Why isn't there a request for the greater than?
Right. I think you need that.
Twenty-five percent.
Right.
It's part of the application, I believe. In fact, I think that's why we're here today, because-
Well, yeah.
I don't see it on the- It's not on the application.
Well, it doesn't say what section anyway. Okay, alright. Got any questions, John?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it does.
Yeah, actually, it says it on the, uh-
Oh, it does, good.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, okay. Any questions, John?
No, I, I just, the, again, the moving, the setbacks, the front's gonna be twenty-eight five?
Correct.
Is that, is that the porch overhang?
That's, um, to the front of the porch, overhang.
So that's the roof overhang there, so?
I think the overhang will actually come another twelve inches.
Okay.
So is that to the wall? Is that?
That's to the wall, yes.
Alright.
That's to the wall.
Yeah. And then, again, the leachig field's gonna be in the front. And the shed in the rear is gonna remain?
Yes.
Sir? Nana?
Nope, nope, no, except that, uh, to note that, uh, this should be an aesthetic improvement, because the grass is always greener over the septic tank.
Right, yeah.
So, you should be good.
Well, I'm really disappointed that we can't have more controversy in this.
What's it, that was a tough act to follow, I might add. I didn't know what to expect.
Alright, motion?
Move to grant, uh, the applicant's, uh, request to, uh, raise and reconstruct, um, his house as per the application.
And plans.
And plans. Increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent.
And should we give the, uh, date of the plans?
As, as we have it in the file. Six, twelve, twelve. Otherwise, six, thirteen, twelve. We can do that.
What's the right plans? Your date of giving, six thirteen?
You got the revision date, right?
Seven thirteen, twelve.
Yes.
That's the revision? Yeah, that's the one that just came in.
I just wanna make sure.
Alright, that's a, so we reference it.
Sure, thanks.
Alright.
Read these titles.
That's-
Alright, discussion. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone here that would want to be heard with regard to this application, for or against? Thank you. Hearing none? Motion's been made second to approve the application as made and with plans submitted therewith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Frank, you get to vote, even though you-
Do I?
Even though it's not officially recorded.
Aye.
We do things different then. Board health.
I guess.
Alright, whose decision is that? Okay.
That's mine?
Yeah.
Okay. Unless you'd like to do it?
No.
Oh, shoot.
Well, you still don't, you don't get credit when the lawyer writes the decision.
Oh, alright, I'll do it.
Alright, no, seriously, before you say no, bear this in mind, alright? If we write the decision, we have ninety days.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand. I, I thought we were kidding for a moment. I'm happy to write the decision.
I wouldn't kid. I never kid about somebody else writing that.
I could get a copy of the vote specifically.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
And she'll even, she'll even send you some of the templates.
So I don't have to do it then?
No, but you don't, you're not up-
I got the last one. Uh-oh, what's worse? Wait a minute, wait a minute, what's next? I wanna know.
No, no, that's not, I didn't understand the question.
Yeah, good, good. Alright, you're all set.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's Paul Maribito one next.
Oh, that guy?
I think we should nominate Frank to write all of them, 'cause he does that on Board Health.
Yeah.
Oh, what?
You write all of them.
Write all the decisions.
For the Board Health.
Yeah, so I should be excused.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm still on it.
You're still on it?
Yeah.
Is there a state law that prohibits?
You know, it's funny you ask that question. I had that conversation with the Ethics Commission today. When somebody else asked the same question, I said, gee, I never even thought of that. They asked me to do, you know, to stay on for the expiration of the last year of my term. It never even occurred to me. So the answer is no, I have no problem.
Oh, it's because it's, you have to be employed.
I'm not getting paid for either job.
Right.
I have no financial interest, that's great.
Come on, it's okay. Okay.
Okay, and third, Gerald McCarthy at one thirty-nine South Street, Met, Metfield, requests a special permitting in Section eight thirty, eight ten, two, four, that the Bible has to be considered by the end of selling, and by time we have any increase in the gross floor area of fifty-three percent over the line.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What are you, woman? Um, my name is Paul Maribito from Ross Engineering Company. I'm representing the owners and applicants of the property at one oh nine, uh, Humrock Beach Road. The purpose of the filing is twofold. One is to seek a special permit under Section eight thirty of the zoning bylaw for a house that was, uh, destroyed by fire. The subject house was, uh, one of the four houses that burned earlier this year in that, uh, fire down in Humrock. And the other is under Section eight ten two B for, um, reconstructing the home on a lot that is, um, substandard and that does not meet the required lot area of ten thousand square feet. And it does not have the, um, required setbacks in one location, which is seven point eight feet to the eight. Uh, the proposal is to push the house back about three feet from the seawall, so it'll be placed in the, um, AO zone as opposed to the velocity zone. Um, and also the house will be, uh, less wide. Um, currently, it's nine point three feet from the, uh, uh, sideline to the north, and seven point eight feet to the south. Um, the lot is, um, a rectangle fifty by a hundred and fifty. The proposed house will be ten feet off of each side setback. Um, we will increase the setback, um, which is, uh, Humrock Beach Road, to forty feet to forty-three point three. Um, the setback from the, um, Westerly side will be increased from fifty-four to fifty-four point eight. The line you see in blue is the proposed dwelling, which will be fifty-two by thirty. And the orange is the existing dwelling, which, um, will be, um, the new, the new set for the area in blue. We have received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and the one is no appeal taken. Um, the existing septic system is gonna, uh, remain in place. This foundation will be on a wood-driven pile foundation to meet the DEP requirements to work on coastal ruin and buried beach. I think with that, I'll come with presentation and answer any questions you have. I, I, I did put in the application, uh, zoning chart to show you the, uh, nonconformities and how, when this side is, when the new building is completed. Um, every setback will be conforming. And the only nonconforming would be the, uh, left frontage and the lot area.
Is this the first of the houses, the four to be rebuilt?
Pardon?
Is this the first of the four to be rebuilt?
As far as I know.
Where's the, I'm sorry, Paul, I, I, where's the frontage?
Where's what?
Wha- what, what is it front on?
Humrock Beach Road is the address. Humrock Beach Road is the ocean. I didn't put it on the plan, 'cause I was afraid someone might try, try to drive down it.
That's something.
You, you know, you have a similar situation in Sand Hills, I think it's Seaside Road, there's houses with addresses of Seaside Road, we've done work on two or three of them, and Seaside Road is on the ocean.
Yeah. Town way.
Town way, yes, you're right.
So the, the existing twenty-foot wide passageway is the, is the practical access?
That's, that's the access into that property off of Marshall Ave? That's how the access is.
So it's kind of like a side alley, like, uh.
Exactly.
That runs parallel to Central Street?
Exactly.
All the way down?
I believe the, um.
Kind of a sandy.
Twenty-foot right of way stops at our property?
Oh.
And the other people come in from the street to the lot?
The other side, yeah.
That's Webster Street?
Webster. Fascinating. Did the camera? Yes, sir.
It, it doesn't stop, that road is the original Humrock Road that used to go all the way up the cliff.
Really?
So way back to the neighborhood, people would build sheds and bonds and whatever, the L over, but that actually is the old cotton path that used to go all the way up the cliff.
Yep, okay.
And it goes on the next house, so it doesn't stop at his house, on the third house, and, and, and where, where the last house, kind of the other neighbors come in from whence the street. So there is, I do have to get by that road, to be clear that it doesn't tend to his house, there's another house next door.
Don't worry.
On one eleven? On one eleven, yep, on the Davis', yep.
Okay. Questions from Mr. Maribito?
Is there anything going outside this footprint, steps coming down, or roofs, or anything else?
There are, um.
I, I see the old steps, but I don't know if there's any.
Yes.
Any additional?
There are stuffs, there are stuffs that wanna be in this area here. Um, so the, um, there, there's an exact, there, there is an existing entrance on the side of the house, that's where they park the cars, they'll walk in, and there'll be a side entrance here, and they'll be known as the parking for the existing manor. So there are, there's a set of open stairs here, or sort of closed stairs.
And, and you said the existing septic system's gonna stay where it is?
Yes.
Sarah?
No.
Anyone else, anyone, uh, anybody from the neighborhood?
It's Frank.
Frank?
Nope.
Alright. Motion? Nice work.
Thank you.
Thanks for not coming in with nine point eight feet.
I wanted to make this easy and simple.
Move to grant the application of Gerald McCarthy for, um, for a special permit to reconstruct his dwelling at one oh nine Humrock Beach Road, which was damaged in fire. What, what was, when was the fire?
March ninth.
March ninth of two thousand twelve.
What happened to you?
And to increase, um.
Sorry, big pardon.
To allow the increase of the gross floor area fifty-three percent. As per the plans submitted by the applicant this date.
I meant, I meant fire.
Well, we're, we're better, there's nothing there.
Nothing?
I've worked with Neil, we already cleaned out the foundation zone, we're just gonna go with the next steps of rebuilding, but we don't have to.
But you lost your house.
We have a lot of this house in Humrock, and we're never gonna fulfill that.
Yeah.
So we don't have to get it.
They can rebuild it now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a ten bed before bath house, I don't know anyone who would need that, it's just worth the time and the life of it.
While, while, uh, we have people here from Humrock and that area, I, I just gotta make a little statement, which is not really.
Of course.
Thank you. Um, I noticed you moved back thirty feet from the seawall, and you're, you get out of the velocities.
Yes.
And it, it, I, my understanding is that if you go three feet higher than what's required, uh, you get a substantial break in your blood pressure. But you have to go on pilings anyway, so.
Oh, yeah.
Keep that in mind, um, when, when you're going up, three feet higher than what's required, uh, if you hate.
Now, that's three feet higher in any flood zone?
Yes.
So if, if I'm in the, I'm. This house will be in the AO zone, which is a two-foot deck, which means the first floor would have to be two feet above grid.
Right, but I also wanted to suggest that, that there's a, and I don't agree with the interpretation, but I'm not NFIP, and I'm not FEMA, that if a deck is added and attached to the house, uh, and, and, and the deck is in the velocity zone, uh, there is a school of thought at, at a very high level, that that, that the whole house is in the velocity zone.
The deck, it won't be attached to the house, it'll probably be that far from it, but it is physically attached.
Okay.
Way, that's the way we've had it done on all the houses down there, and we do it for that reason, so the deck, because the theory is that usually the decks are gonna go, you don't wanna attach them to the house, it'll does damage to the house. And every house I've been on. Pardon?
Well, people are in the planning stage, we need to be aware of that.
Huh? Yeah, did you finish making the motion? Alright, seconded, discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Just don't go anywhere.
Paul, can you email me your little charity thing?
Pardon?
Email, like you did the last time, can you email, email me your, your charity?
Sure. Must be your.
Inherited.
Must be, you're gonna be writing the decision.
Yes. I just wanted it for personal use.
I can do that.
You want these back?
No.
No.
How much paper we printed today for conservation? We went through a half a case of paper. A full row of, oh, jeez.
Next.
Who's next?
Okay, thank you.
Proceed.
Very ambitious.
Okay.
Good thing we did them in the right order.
The owners recently purchased the property at number five twenty on Hadley Road, and the reason we're here is to seek a special permit and finding to, um, construct an addition. We're doing it on Section eight ten two B, the reason being that on Cotton Town Way, as you see here, is, is a way, there, there is a layout for it. Um, the yellow represents the, uh, the existing lot size. This subject is laid out, I think, in an earlier picture from John Dambler, there are four lots, there are two on Hadley Road, and two off the close end. Uh, this is a way, the required setback is thirty feet from away, the existing house is fourteen point five feet, uh, the second floor addition would be twenty-two point six feet from the layout on Cotton Town Way, and where that's away, it's, it's gonna be probably be thirty feet. So that's the purpose for the application, seek that, uh, we leave to construct the second floor addition at a point that's less than three feet from away. All the other, uh, dimensional, uh, requirements are met, don't play a lot of parties from our area, and, um, setbacks other than the existing house here. There's also an increase in the gross floor area of approximately sixty percent.
See the water?
Pardon?
High enough to see the water? Probably not.
In a storm, yes.
Okay. That's kinda weird, huh?
You mean a layout?
Yeah.
It is, but, um, there, there's, um, quite a few of those in town, going back to the forties and fifties.
Well, since you own to the middle of the road anyway, I suppose they tried to make things.
There's a picture there, the, um, it, uh, looks like a driveway going down from Hadley Road, and there's two houses in the back.
Yeah.
We've actually surveyed three of the four lots there, including this one, so.
Yeah. Okay, John, any questions?
Uh, that, that is a gravel drive that they use now, then?
I believe so.
Sarah?
No.
Frank?
Nope.
Motion? No, I'm sorry, anybody in the neighborhood like to be heard? It's an agreeable crowd tonight.
Yes, we scared them.
Motion?
Uh, let's see, uh, motion to grant, uh, the applicant's request for special permit finding, forward to Section eight ten point two B, uh, for proposed issues, increase of sixty percent in gross square foot of a non-conforming structure located at five twenty-nine Hadley Road.
As per plans.
As per plan.
Dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand twelve, Ross Engineering. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Peter, you say it's your question, when he is here? The owner's thinking of putting a garage at the back of the house here, the garage would be thirty feet off the way line, and it would meet the setbacks from the rear and the side. Is there any reason why he couldn't do that as a matter of right? I, I can't think of that.
No, it's just a garage?
Yeah, just.
No, no habitable space?
No.
Okay. If, if we were increasing the habitable space of the pre-existing non-conforming structure by more than twenty percent, would habitable space in the garage be happening?
That's right. Very good, because he'd be increasing by more than, more than the second.
Right, but it's just a garage.
That would be your decision, John, for the estimate?
Alright. Who's, uh, who was the preview, who was the McCarthys?
Um, Sarah.
Alright, so Sarah has Mc.
Sarah's writing up first, when Sarah's writing.
Right, Sarah's writing McCarthy.
John.
John's doing Pestone.
We've got one more, and it's not here, so, uh, you're not, so.
What?
Go back to, I think they need their decision, but by the way, it's never been financed, and you messed up.
Oh. Well.
I don't know if we want if someone's available to fight against someone who don't do them, but, um.
Well, let's, uh, don't jump the gun here. What's right away mean?
If, if, if need be.
What does right away mean, tomorrow?
Tomorrow, Monday.
Monday?
Today, today needs something.
Oh, really? Okay, well, let's, let's, let's get them up here and deal with it.
Grill.
Next session is. Hi.
Hi. Okay. Do your neighbors in Cohasset know you're moving to Situate?
Yes, we are.
Yes, yeah, they're jealous.
Tell us what you're doing.
Um, well, we're buying a, it's a ranch right now, and we're adding a second floor, um, but we're pretty much, we're staying in the existing, uh, floor, uh.
Footprint.
Footprint, yeah.
Yep.
Um, and, yeah, and, and when Nicole was saying, um, we are, it's, we are a little under the gun, only because we're buying this house, and it's all contingent on our closing, and they, they need the permit in order for us to close on the house that we're buying, and, 'cause we're doing a construction loan, so. We were just gonna request, if possible, if we could have, if you do decide that it's fine and you pass it, if we possibly could get it as soon as you're able to do it, so we could.
Okay, you know that, you know, you, if we filed the decision tomorrow, you still wouldn't have it for twenty days.
We have to wait the twenty days, so we will have to extend the closing, we, we had already extended it once with them, and we understand that, but, so we're just, right.
Right. Yeah. Okay. And why are you here so late? No, it's not, no, 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 so, so tell us what you're doing, you're going.
Why, we didn't, we didn't know, we, we, we didn't even know, we, we had a, um, we just didn't know the process, that's all, and fortunately Nicole did put us on the docket for tonight, 'cause that, we would've been in big trouble if we had to wait another month, but we, we really didn't even know what, what this entailed, and because we're adding more, you know, than the twenty percent, that's why.
We didn't, we didn't know it. Go through, go through the zone, we didn't, we didn't know the process, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
We're here, so, um, yeah, right now, it's pretty much, you know, it was more like a summer cottage, um, the people that were living there now, we're just, um, yeah, making it clear.
Okay. Um, you are?
Dick Rockwood, I did the drawing.
Alright, so you did the, this is, you were Morse Engineering, or you were the architect?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Alright, so. You have. Neil?
Yeah.
Walk us through this, tell us what they're doing.
Uh, they're putting a second floor on, uh, the non-conforming structure, they're, uh, increasing, uh, uh, I think they are adding a little, like, a bump up.
It's like a, like a four-foot pump up, and if the twelve is going sixteen on the second floor, creating a little eight-foot porch to walk in and get out of the weather.
Yeah, so four, it's a little bit of that.
Oh. Over, over the deck.
And I, I just noticed, you know, it's a very low-profile house, it's only twenty-three feet to the peak, uh, maybe way bigger than, you know, a big big passport.
Yeah.
That's the, uh, the new house is gonna be twenty-three feet.
The new house?
Well, the rebuilding, the second floor is gonna be twenty.
Yeah, definitely.
Really?
Yeah.
Those drawings are reading them, Steve.
Okay.
Short people. Yeah.
Uh, is there, uh. Any other tricks? I mean, it's, you know, three, three point nine and six point three, I mean, it's pretty tight to the line there, but they, they can't, don't seem to be able to do anything about that.
'Cause you're going right over the, the existing house.
Yeah, exactly, the only.
Not changing the footprint.
No, no, uh, right where the deck is, um, that.
That's okay, that's.
Yeah, the top floor, but we're not, we're not expanding back or front or side at all.
That's good, you don't have any room.
Alright. Is there anyone in the audience who, uh, would like to ask a question or be heard? Alright. John?
Uh, again, all the setbacks remain the same, there's no change in the footprint, except for the overhang.
Yeah, and, I mean, I'm looking at the house, the house that's most impacted, um, um, that they're closest to is a, you know, a big monster too, so it's not like he's got a.
He gets one of the last, smaller homes.
See the roof deck on that?
My god.
Neil, is the roof deck on this neighbor's house legal? You didn't see it?
It's in the back.
Did you see it?
No.
No.
Building properties, there, there are roof decks all over that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Oh.
Are they permitted? Neil?
Will be tomorrow.
I don't look at about thousands each year, wow.
I see, I don't know what you're talking about.
As, as you leave Standish Ave, it's on the reverse side.
I haven't posted one when we inspect, uh.
Yeah, it's behind.
Which is the house?
Yeah?
Is this the house?
Do you know, when did it go out?
Yeah.
Long before I moved here.
Really?
I didn't paint it in twenty years. Yeah, it, it looks pretty rough.
Is that right?
That, that's gotta be a violation, kind of, right?
Really?
It's, it's, it's the one right there.
That's kind of a shame.
I see.
Alright.
Like six some right now.
So, no one in the audience to be heard?
Nice little one, though.
Anybody got any questions for these lovely folks?
I do not.
Guess not, huh?
None.
Alright, um, John, since you did such a good job with the last motion. Practice makes perfect, go ahead.
This is true, uh, let's see, motion request, uh, section forty, section, it's a special permit finding to add second floor to existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at twenty-five Standish Ave, as referenced in, um.
Ooh.
Who?
Nothing, I, I'll bring it up in a minute.
Okay. Alright. As referenced in Morse Engineering Plan dated seven, twelve, twelve?
Yeah. Filed there. Yep. Filed there with. All right. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
No, except that I, I, what I don't see is, and now I'm looking, you, you don't own the property yet, right? Stevens?
No, that's why we're, um, that's why we need the, um,
Oh, yeah, the, uh.
Right.
Right, 'cause we're, it's, it's, it's un, obviously, it's under agreement. We've done the appraisal already, we've gotten the money.
Okay, you know what? Yeah, that, that's fine, but we just simply need something from the present owner, the record owner.
Actually, the, the purchase and sale agreement will do it.
That, that gives you permission to
Represent.
Represent the, yeah, 'cause this, you don't own the house, so you don't really have the right to come in here.
Oh, I see.
You have to get it through them, so you just have to, they have to write something
Copy of the purchase and sale agreement is sufficient.
Yeah, that would work.
Oh, I could get that in.
Yeah, so that needs to be filed with, with, um, Nicole.
Okay, I can.
It's just a formality and.
Yeah, I'll get that.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, I seconded.
And, um, all right, so moved and seconded. Uh, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimously approved. Now, let's talk, uh, about, uh, I would write this in, in, and give it to Nicole tomorrow, but I will not be here. I can do it by Monday, but that's three days longer than that. Is there anybody, do you wanna swap with me, John?
Uh.
You wanna swap one with me? So, so, uh, you can write the, can you write it, can you help these folks out and get a decision out tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, I could through something like.
Can you?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't wanna put you in a hu, on a sp, on a, you know, in a spot. All right, so I'll swap with you and, um,
Again, next week or after.
Which one did you have? Did you have McCarthy or, uh,
I had, uh,
Or?
Five twenty-nine.
Okay.
That was John, so.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John.
Welcome to Citrus.
What time do you think you get that out, through email?
Welcome to Citrus. I, uh, I'd be tonight or tomorrow, man.
Sorry, John, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Yeah.
Hi. I think I may have a couple, so.
Um, can I give my proxy vote to Peter? 'Cause I'm gonna be, I have a hearing, and I won't be, app, email.
I won't, I won't be.
Hear it all.
Well, but I, you know, I, it's not a problem. You're gonna, John, when will you have it out?
I'll send it to Neil for any corrections.
Send it to Neil for corrections. Yeah, I'm gonna be at a hearing at eleven o'clock in court, so I won't get it by, before noon at all.
All right, is that?
Will you be able to get that purchase and seal?
I'll get it for, I'll, yeah, I'll get it here tomorrow. I just, yeah, yeah, I just have, I can get.
Yeah, we'll get a.
Yes. You open at what time? Okay. Okay. No, we'll get it here.
Yeah, I have one, I have a question. Is it, is it written, uh, to the current owner or to the, probably should be written to the current owner.
Well, I've always written it, that, that they, they call, they're, they're ap, they're applica, applying on behalf of the owner. And then you just, it's a matter of making sure that the record reflects that they have the permission. That's how I always write it.
Do we, do we have the name of the parent owner?
Stevens. No, not Stevens. It's in the.
It's in the deed, okay.
Yeah.
The current owner's?
It's not that, it's, um, personally.
So you have to turn them.
Nobody, nobody.
We'll tighten it. I think it's in the deed, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, as long as it's in here.
I can, uh, I'll scan.
Oh, actually, it's on the, uh.
I'll scan the P and S as soon as I get it, before I email you.
All right, plus it comes up on the taxes as well.
We're gonna have to hold on to the Stockbridge Road stuff. I have a feeling we're gonna need it.
Okay, you're all set.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thanks so much, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else, Nicole?
And yet someone sits.
I'm not, I just came to see this one.
Oh, okay.
And the condition's right. Don't have much of a life, do you?
That was me. How about a garage? We can sell your garage today.
What's more exciting, do the selectments there. Selectments.
Well, we've got a motion, so this goes and go home.
Yeah.
See if they call for it.
Oh, uh, here's what we do, our, our little practice, uh, it says mind practice anyway. Given the poor Nicole's budget for page, paper clips
Uh-huh.
and elastic bands, what we do is, when we're done, if it's, if you don't have to write the decision, you take the paper.
Oh, no, 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 that needs, the photos need to be part of the record. You have the original.
She has the photos.
I have, no, I have, I have.
You have a set?
I, I would.
And then we, we take all the paper clips and give them to Nicole, so that she can
Sad, but.
reuse them.
I'm gonna have to tell Jennifer that, 'cause, uh, you know, she's, she's clearly, uh, blowing her budget on.
'Cause I can't buy pens anymore. I take food to the end of my pen. To be, lunch and, right.
You gotta play them on the word for that.
You don't want the staples, though, right?
Okay.
Do they have a motion to adjourn then? Well, you've been making all the motions, so go ahead. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, aye. There we go.
There you go. Now she go.
See, Frank, and the fun part is, you get to see all these architects and decide what you like and what you don't like, in case you wanna do anything to your house.
Frank, do you have any idea?
No, I, I, no.
We're working on it.
Oh, God.
Dude, how was the seat, though?
We don't even get to sit up in a big chair here, we sit down there. This is, this is special.
Huge.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, I sure.
Sellout, I mean, uh. It's huge sellout. Pat, right to the very end.
Oh, good.
It's great.